Okay, I'd like to call the April 6th San Carlos Planning Commission meeting to order. If you'd all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Thank you. Can I have roll call?
Commissioner Bergman.
Present.
Commissioner Musters.
Present.
Commissioner Harper Pedersen.
Present.
And for the record, both the Chair, David Silverman, and Vice Chair, Jessica Tiris, are absent this evening.
Okay, so do we make an announcement that, is there any formal process for me chairing the meeting, or do we just state it for the record, or?
You want us to nominate her, or does? You can just?
Okay, for the record, I will be Shannon Bergman. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. Thanks. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention, or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action and report. And I have one speaker card here for public comment, and that's Vanessa Navala. Do you want to come up?
Hello.
Hi.
This is my first time speaking in front of, you know, a panel of my representatives, so hello. A couple things. I just wanted to let you know, I sent you a letter last week for a zoning change, and I just wanted to put my face with it, so that you kind of know. The other thing is that in a few weeks, you're going to be reviewing a new planning submission for a project at 545 Walnut, which is right next door to our building. And it's fairly drastic for us in the 551 building. And Lisa and Jill are going to be visiting my apartment to kind of see the impact this coming Friday, but I'd also like to invite you to come at any time. Now, I understand that, I think, no more than two of you can be together, or it's a public meeting.
Right, exactly. We can't create a quorum, so we would probably come individually.
Right, right. So I just wanted to open that invitation up to you. And the reason I think it's useful is because inside our units, when we look out our windows, there are very clear reference points, like visual reference points, to be able to assess, you know, the scale and scope of what the impact will be. And it probably would take no more than 10, 15 minutes at most to just see. So, and I think that would be good for you.
Could you just repeat the address for me?
Sure. Of the project, or of us?
Of you.
Okay, 551 Walnut. Yeah.
Can you leave your contact information with staff, so that if we want to get in touch with you to schedule coming over that?
Yeah, yeah. Jill has it.
You don't?
Jill has it. And if you want, I can also, you know, call you or email you, you know, make one-on-one kind of arrangements.
We'll do it through staff.
Okay, good. All right, so that was it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to make a comment on something that's not on the posted agenda? Okay. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and move to the next item on the agenda, which are the approval of the March 16th Planning Commission minutes. Any comments or changes for the March 16 minutes?
I had no changes.
No changes.
Okay, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none, motion passes. All right, thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is the public hearing. So the procedures for the public hearing are that our staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed by the staff's recommendations. The applicant will then make a presentation. Therefore, thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no other further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior during the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker form, found by the door back there, and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speakers should come up, speakers when they come up should come to the microphone to speak, since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist our staff in preparing minutes. And the first thing on our agenda today is 977 Laurel Street, which is APN 051-358-270. Design review, a request for a conditional use permit and a below-market-rate housing plan for a new eight-unit mixed-use development. Do we have a presentation by staff?
Yes, you do.
Oh, great.
Good evening. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'll present to you the request for design review approval, conditional use permit approval, and approval of the below-market-rate housing plan at, excuse me, 977 Laurel Street. The project site consists of one parcel measuring 6,004 square feet in area that is currently developed with a seven-unit multifamily residential building. The property is owned MUD, mixed-use downtown, and has a corresponding general plan land use designation of mixed-use medium density, which allows up to 50 dwelling units per acre. The existing neighborhood consists of a mix of land uses, including mixed-use, commercial, medical office, and single-family residential. A public alley abuts the rear. The first floor will contain a 960-square-foot retail space at the front of the structure, a covered parking garage at the rear with a two-way driveway entrance off the public alley, its entrance and exit, and residential lobby, along with trash and recycling enclosures and long-term bicycle parking spaces. The short-term bicycle parking spaces will be located within the public right-of-way in front of the building. The second through fourth floors will contain all residential units with four, three, and one unit per each floor respectively. Units will range from one-bedroom to three-bedroom units. Landscaping is limited to the ground floor and second floors. There are 10 covered parking spaces proposed in total, though only nine are shown on the ground floor plan. The applicant will use stacked parking at one of these spaces to accommodate a total of 10 cars. The project requires Planning Commission approval of the following entitlements: design review, which is required for all new construction, a conditional use permit, which is twofold. It's a request to increase the FAR, or floor area ratio, by .05, and approval of a city density bonus. There's also approval needed for the below-market-rate housing plan per the rental alternatives section. The proposed design of the structure uses a 16-foot-tall ground-floor facade of smooth concrete that is carried throughout all four elevations with storefront windows and metal awnings on the front. The front also features metal deck railings with tempered glass glazing. The upper floor's architectural treatment is a contrast of contemporary design with elements of fiber cement siding on one side, and a dark bronze metal window projection on the other side, with smooth stucco walls painted in one of three complementary colors on all four elevations. Two 24-inch box trees, either Chinese pistachio or evergreen elm, with root barriers are proposed within the public right-of-way. In front of the retail space and entry to the residential lobby, there will be herringbone brick accent paving, punctuated with accent vines or upright plants to highlight the architectural features of the ground floor. Second-floor plantings line the rear and right-side property lines with flowering and, excuse me, trailing shrubs lining the parapet wall. Two small, spreading accent trees and planters are proposed along the right side. Along the rear and right, narrow, upright, evergreen shrubs perform the same task. The rest of the landscaped area is made of ornamental aggregate. The Planning Commission must consider the extra paving and gravel material as part of an alternative landscaping plan. These two elevations are the front and right side of the building. The project is consistent with the supplemental regulations of the MU districts, or mixed-use districts, covering design, street frontages, building orientation and entrances, and articulation. The entrance to the residential lobby is recessed and distinct from the retail use. These two elevations are the rear and left side of the structure. Through a variety of projections, extensive use of balconies, and accent colors, the stories are broken up into distinct pieces. This is demonstrated through the vertical relationship of a distinctive base, middle, and top. The project complies with all development standards within the zoning ordinance. So those are height setbacks, a building setback at the fourth story, open space, landscaping, because the design review authority or the Planning Commission can approve an alternate landscaping plan. Parking, stacked parking, as I detailed before, is permitted outright in our parking chapter, and bicycle parking. There are two exceptions, which I will detail on the next slide. One of the requests is the applicant is requesting a .05 FAR increase, or floor area ratio increase, which is less than the maximum 10% that the code provides. The maximum FAR allowed per code is 2.5, and the request for an additional .05 for a total of FAR of 2.55, when it could be as high as 2.75. The applicant proposes one electric car charging station and the possible installation of solar panels in exchange for the FAR increase. So, and then the second request is a conditional use permit to grant a city density bonus. That's in exchange for providing one very low-income unit that the city may grant a city density bonus upon approval of a conditional use permit. With a lot size of 6,004 square feet, the density would be limited to seven units. Since it is a rental development, the density, excuse me, the project would be exempt from providing a BMR unit onsite and would be instead required to pay the affordable housing impact fee. The applicant has instead offered to provide a below-market-rate unit onsite, and in exchange is requesting a city density bonus for one additional unit. The eight units proposed include one one-bedroom BMR unit dedicated to a very low-income household. The city's general plan and housing element encourage the construction of affordable housing, so accordingly, staff supports the request for a density bonus. The provided BMR housing plan responds to all eight listed criteria, including the city density bonus incentive. The applicant architects performed their own outreach to property owners within a 300-foot radius of the property's boundaries prior to application submittal. The notification list provided to the applicant by the city contained the names of 138 property owners, and three individuals total attended the meeting that was held at the First Baptist Church at 787 Walnut Street on March 25, 2014, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Staff received one email from a neighboring property owner at 964 El Camino Real that is in front of you this evening, which speaks to parking issues in the neighborhood and the residential unit count. So before you, I have the formal motion. Should you choose to make it, at this point, I can take any questions you may have for staff, and the architects are also available to any questions you may have of them.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff at this time?
I'm going to wait until after the applicant makes a presentation.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make some representation?
Robert Silva-Joe, RYS Architects, and Joni Chin, also project architect, is here tonight. I am available for questions. I think staff did a nice presentation of what we're presenting, so I'd like to focus on your questions, if you have any, and I can maybe get into some specifics if you have any questions.
Questions?
Some questions. I'm not sure who to direct them to. Well, why don't I start with a quick one? I think this might be, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if it's for you or for staff, but the current, the height of the current two-story apartment building, can somebody give me what that is? Does anybody have any estimate? Because it looks like the same exact height as the one-story buildings right on either side, when you're driving by it.
We don't have that information in the plans. I don't know if the architect happens to know, or based upon their, being an architect, maybe you can come up with a better estimate than staff might?
The existing apartment building, I believe, is set back, whereas the two properties are right at the sidewalk property line. So that might be why it appears, when you're driving by, that it might be a little lower, because it is stepped back a bit.
Okay. I mean, I also got out and looked at it, but yeah, and visually, it might just be playing a trick on me, but it really doesn't look, it doesn't look like a two-story building at all. I mean,
I'm not sure.
I mean, it looks exactly the same height as the animal dermatology building right next to it, to me. And I don't know if you all had a chance to take a look at the site, but?
I believe that existing apartment building is flat roof.
Right.
And there's very tall mansards, mansard roof on the, I believe it's a pet hospital?
Okay.
And the other one, so that might be why, because they have such a tall mansard on the storefront.
I see. That makes sense. Can you walk me through, and the measurement of the setback of the second and third story? Because in the, in the picture, and of course, I'm looking at it in 2D, it just looks massive from the street view. But clearly, when you're looking at the north and south elevation, you can see it's setback, but I can't quite tell how big that setback is. Can you walk me through that?
Yeah, on, on the, and you're speaking about the street elevation?
Yes. So, looking at it from the front, of course, it looks flat, because it's a 2D picture, and
Right.
I'm never good at discerning that, even now. But when you're looking at the elevations, you can tell that the second and third story is set back from the bottom story. Can you walk me through how many feet that is setback?
The setback from, well, the ground floor is at zero. The second and third is set back slightly. Let me see, the south, south elevation, it's set back slightly, because at the, at the ground floor, where you see that kind of solid element going above the storefront, is set at 16 feet high, which is part of the design guidelines. We have to get that 16-foot height along the street storefront. So there's a slight recess there. And Joni, do you remember what that setback is? It's about a foot, maybe a little bit less.
Okay.
Because in the guidelines, we're supposed to set back the top floor. In original, well, in an early scheme, we had set back all top three floors. But we were, by doing that, we had moved all of the upper floors back on the lot, so that they were closer to the alley. We thought there might be a little bit less impact on the alley, it's a commercial alley, and maybe get a little bit more relief on the street, because initially, you know, right now, it's one-story buildings on both sides of us. Eventually, when it, you know, all gets redeveloped, and it's all the same setbacks, then we might be the farthest setback. But in working with staff, and trying to be consistent with the guidelines, not ask for variance for that setback, we shifted the whole building forward on the second and third floor to be in compliance with the setback, and then pushed it all back on the fourth floor.
Okay.
So now we are in compliance with all of the setbacks. And, but to give that sense of that 16-foot line at the street storefront level, there's a slight setback from, on the second and third floor. But, but like I said, it's, I think it's less than a foot.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
Trying to figure out where to begin here. Let's start with the north side of the building. It looks to me like there's just differences in paint, but there's not a single window, there's, there's really nothing there on that side of the building. What it's going to look like to me is a big giant wall with squares of different colors. And I'm not sure that I like the way that will look. I think that one of the things in our guidelines is that the building needs to look good from all four sides. It can't look good from three sides. And so, to me, I have trouble looking at that north side and thinking that there isn't going to be anything. Down the road, there might be a building right next to it. But that could be 20 years down the road, that could be 30 years down the road, could be two weeks from now. That's just something that I'm struggling with as far as that particular side of the building. Let's see, what else have I got? Is there, I noticed there's a chimney. Is that for a wood burning stove, or a gas burning stove?
It's gas.
It's gas. Okay. That's good. Let's see. The other thing that it seems like to me is that the, the intent of stepping the fourth floor back was to make it look like the fourth floor was actually stepped back. The way the architecture on both sides is, it actually makes it look like it's a much taller building from the street, and that you don't really see that the fourth floor is set back. It's almost as if half of that fourth floor has come out towards the street. And that seems counter to what we would like to see, which is that the fourth floor is actually set back away from the street. And by putting those architectural elements all the way up into the fourth floor, it kind of makes it seem like the building is, is more massive from the street. So I have a little bit of an issue with that, because that goes at least halfway up the height of, of the fourth floor. I guess another question I have is the solar panels. Are you going to do solar panels? Are you not going to do solar panels? It just seems like you haven't decided whether you're going to do solar panels yet, as, and as part of this project. That plays into my decision about whether
A density bonus?
A density bonus, and the increase of the floor area ratio. And so, I'd kind of like to have that question answered. Let's see, what else? Do you know if that retail space is going to be used for a restaurant?
It's, per the allowable uses, which are listed, and I'm not, I don't think restaurant is one of the allowable in this zone.
I would be surprised if it wasn't.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd be surprised if it wasn't.
I'd be surprised if it wasn't. Okay.
But if I could answer that, the size of the space, and we do restaurant design too, is pretty small to do a food service in there. By the time you take out the kitchen, the food service, storage,
Right.
It's not very feasible, even if it would be allowed, which, but I don't think, and I can't, the owner's not here, I can't speak for him, but I don't, we've never had any discussions about that being a food service.
Because I was concerned about that, because you're planting some large trees in there, you're going to do some bike parking out front, and so to have food out on the sidewalk there may create a walkway issue. Okay, so that's something that I was worried about. Can somebody walk me through the parking? Because it seemed like I could only find eight spaces. And when you said that there was one stacked, I counted nine. So maybe somebody can walk through.
Sure, I think Jill will do that, but prior to her getting started on that, I will follow up with a response to your question regarding whether eating and drinking establishments are part of the list of uses that would be exempt if the space is less than 1,500 square feet. And that is correct. Eating and drinking establishments are included within that list. So basically, what that would mean is that if, I believe the space is less than 1,500 square feet.
950.
Yes. And that means that if an eating and drinking establishment were to go in there, it would comply with the parking exemption that's in the code, amongst other uses as well.
So at the garage, there are seven spaces adjacent to the north wall, and then two additional spaces, kind of against the retail space, one ADA accessible, and then one additional space.
How do we deal with the ADA accessible space if you essentially have all the apartments rented and no one with the requirement for an ADA space? Does that ever get used, or is it just a, it just left empty all the time?
Well, it's a requirement. So based upon the number of parking spaces that are normally otherwise required for a project, depending upon that number of required spaces, there is a corresponding number for how many should be ADA. And for a project of this size with this many parking spaces, they're only required to provide one, should it ever be needed. I think maybe your question is more from an operational perspective, like how those get assigned. And I believe these are rental units. So that would be up to the, to the, you know, landowner, property owner, to determine how they want to assign those. And as Jill mentioned, one of the spaces will be configured as stacked, or a lift parking style configuration. So we have, we will have a total of 10 parking spaces. So we have...we will have a total of 10 parking spaces for eight units.
Really, you only have nine unless there's an ADA individual who requires that space. And there's also a...no parking required for the retail space. And so it just kind of seems like it's a little short on the parking. I realize it meets the code, but I just have a bit of a problem with it. And I can understand the individual who owns the property behind it having issues with the parking because I think there's a lack of parking in that area already. And so that's something that, again, I'll have to consider. Can somebody explain to me the BMR unit? And my impression of BMR units was they were comparable to the other units within the building. And it seems to me like, at the last minute, this one unit was split in half in order to create a below-market-rate unit rather than to have seven units in this building and either pay the fee for the BMR fee or...
Could we pull up the floor plan for the one bedroom? I mean, or can it be pointed out? Because I'd like to see it compared to the other. And this is pretty busy.
We're making an assumption that that middle unit right there in the middle floor, the smallest one, the 527 square foot, would be the BMR.
527?
Yeah. I mean, that's an assumption, though. I don't know that that's...
It's labeled as BMR.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I could barely read that.
And it's the smallest unit in there.
Oh, yeah.
And so I thought that it had to be comparable to other units. And it seems like...is that allowed? Is that something that, you know, somebody can...
820.
Because it just...
Yes.
Gives me an uncomfortable feeling.
To respond to your question, the below-market-rate unit shown on the second floor is 527 square feet is identified as the unit for the very low-income unit. Other units within the project are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and I think...is it the top one?
Yes.
The top one is a three-bedroom. So there are other one-bedroom and two-bedroom. In looking at the other one-bedroom, the square footage is another one-bedroom, I guess market rate unit would be 574 square feet. We referred the applicant's below-market-rate housing plan to our economic development coordinator who specializes in housing, and it was reviewed by a third party. And they found that the below-market-rate unit proposed was comparable. Doesn't need to be exactly the same, but that it was comparable. You have, you know, it's a little bit smaller. It's still one bedroom. So it was found to comply.
The difference is about 10%. But when we first came in, that BMR was a studio. So in working with city staff and the consultant of something that might be more beneficial for a BMR unit, we were able to reduce the size of the two apartments next to it to capture a little bit more space, and we were able to squeeze in a one-bedroom instead of just a studio.
Another issue that I have is sort of the landscaping plan. So if you look at the second floor here, and then if...I don't know whether you have the landscaping plan available. But if you actually look at the landscaping plan, the design of what's there on...so for us, it would be sheet LO1. The plan is different. The building is shaped differently for the landscaping plan than it is for the second floor. So the patios are definitely different sizes. And I think this is an old landscaping plan based on the studio unit.
Because this...
The two patios are square, whereas this one's a long rectangle.
Yeah. And this is one big...
Yes.
Yes, that was...you're right. That was when it was a studio plan.
That makes me feel better about the BMR. It doesn't make me feel better about the landscaping, but it makes me feel better that your original plan was to have a studio as the BMR, and you've upgraded it to...okay. So I feel better about that.
So that changes the patio spaces, but the landscape portion didn't change. It was more a change in the patio and private space.
Comment was made during the staff report that we have to approve gravel and paving as landscaping.
If I can comment on that. I think it was related to what's happening at the streetscape because we're using the pavers. And initially, we had a lot more landscaping shown in the front, but in working with staff and city personnel, they felt that it would be better use of that space to make it more accessible to the storefront instead of closing off the storefront from the sidewalk with planting area. So we've concentrated our planting area now to line up with the pilasters in the storefront so that there's not a barrier between wherever the entry may be. Once that retail space is leased, that door may move, and it made the sidewalk feel wider. So we've got specialty pavement there instead of a ground cover.
I always hate to see us move towards pavement away from plants. And in particular, it seems like the bike is out in the pedestrian walkway near the trees. And yet, this whole area over to the left, there's one door and all this paving over here, but really nothing going on except a doorway to get into the lobby. Right? And so that just seems like, to me, a lot of paving for walking into a doorway and not in front of the retail, but over in front of the lobby.
And that would be possible. I see your point, and that would be possible, to do that with ground cover. In our early schemes, we had that as a raised planter. And again, that was conversations with city staff. They liked the extension of the sidewalk, the feel of a wider sidewalk. But we could certainly make that a planter again, and instead of a raised planter, just keep it at grade, but do ground cover there.
And that's correct. Staff did have conversations...this was a project that went through architectural peer review, and we worked with the applicant and the property owner to make modifications for a design that we felt better fit within the existing context. The applicant had shown landscape planners in front of the building that tended to read more awkwardly and we thought took away from the storefront appearance. So we worked with the applicant to come up with a way where we can have some amount of landscaping on the front, on the front or on the base on the ground floor, retail storefront area. In exchange, because the landscaping plan is permitted, a certain amount of hardscape in exchange for...I think one of the directions that we provided to the applicant was to look at replacing some of the common landscape area with something that's more softer and more permeable.
It just seems like we've replaced plants with rock or...and I think the intent of landscaping is landscaping as much as possible. So another thing I have a little bit of a problem with.
Commissioner Marsh, could you explain your comment about the fourth floor setback, how it actually makes it look like it's not setback? I'm not quite understanding what you mean by that. Could you show me?
Yeah. So if you look at...so you see the first floor, you see the second floor, you see the third floor.
Right.
And if it were...if the fourth floor really stepped back, then you wouldn't have all this extra...
This here.
This...architectural stuff that's pushed out in front. That makes the whole building look much, much taller from sort of the sidewalk. And even though you've stepped back the fourth floor, you really...a good portion of that fourth floor is actually pushed forward. And so I have a...I understand it ties everything architecturally together, but it seems to go counter to the intent of actually stepping back the fourth floor so it's not seen actually pushes the height back and not just the...not just the living space. And so that's sort of where I have a little bit of an issue with that.
If I can make a comment to that?
Sure.
If you look at your sheet A4 for the west elevation, the straight-on elevation, and then the height of that element that is above the entry, you know, at 977, the residential entry, the height of that at the highest point is the height of the code handrail for a deck, which is up on the fourth floor, which is 42 inches. So that was made solid. But then, when you see the middle section and almost to the end on the right, that is all railing, glass railing. And that is at 42 inches high. So...and then the very corner, we had...because you have to have the fire rating to an adjacent property, you can't do an open rail. So we wrapped around the corner so it just doesn't look like a little thin wing wall at that right-hand corner of the building. But we brought down the height of the building, apparent height, by using glass railing up there. Or...and actually, even the top four inches, because you can't do more than a four-inch gap, it's open to the very top railing. So we brought down that height as much as possible everywhere we had the railing. One of the comments that came back to us when we went through the architectural view and peer review is some of our earlier schemes looked more horizontal. So that was an attempt to break up that very horizontal appearance and put more emphasis on the residential entrance, which is also in the guidelines to separate the residential entrance from the retail. So we took that element up and did a solid rail at the top. But basically, it is at handrail height all the way across. The...and the fourth floor is pushed back. And in a rendering, it's hard to tell, depending on where you choose that point, the closer you get to the building, you know, that may make that contrast greater or less, depending on what your vantage point is. But it is at the required setback of 10 feet on the ground, on the top floor.
And if the commission is interested, staff does have a copy of the initial rendering that the applicant had proposed to show where they started and where we ended up with peer review, if the commission is interested in seeing that.
I am interested in seeing that. And then I have just a couple of questions. Because I am trying to...I am trying to remember, as I review the plans, as I always try to remember, that sometimes my initial reaction to a 2D picture with these tiny, tiny buildings next to it isn't really what it's going to look and feel like. So I'm wondering if maybe staff can help me out with that. How many other 49, 50-foot buildings do we have on the east side of Laurel in, say, the 700, 800, 1,000 block?
The ones that come to mind, I would think of, is the building at the corner of Cherry and Laurel. Cherry and Laurel, the building where pizza's. I don't know the exact height, but it's one of the taller ones.
Is there a way we can look at a street view or a streetscape?
Sure.
On Google?
Yeah.
No, just...
I mean, I'm probably more concerned with the height than the stories myself. Like, 1,001 Laurel comes to mind, being relatively close. But I don't actually...again, when I drove and walked it, I don't know what the exact height of that is either. It just seems really big to me. And I just...I can be convinced it's not, but I'm going to need some help with some perspective.
I guess that's what I'm saying, too.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
I mean, and I know that it's complying with all the zoning, everything.
Right. And I also do know, very much know, that the idea is, is that the rest of Laurel will be developed with taller buildings. I know that I've personally said that more than once when we've seen other buildings come in, but for some reason, this seems a more stark contrast to me, and I don't know why, but it really does.
Being the first on the block with the zoning that's been in place now for a while is always, you know, a disadvantage. I'm the architect for Pacific Hacienda across the street. When that went in, that was big.
Yeah.
Now, you know, it's fitting in.
The other thing is that it looks like the two buildings on either side are 16 feet because, at least in your drawing, they actually match the top of your 16-foot, which means that...
Approximately.
Approximately.
We couldn't go out there and measure.
I understand. I understand. You're just kind of...
But it's close.
It's a drawing. Okay.
With the lip on top, if that were like less pronounced, that lip, would that like materially change the perception? You know, this lip here.
This is the old version.
This is the old version. Oh, okay.
I think part of it is the view has you standing, has you up above grade quite a bit when you're looking at that. So you actually see the fourth floor more than you probably will if you were actually down on the pavement.
Right.
So I can see that.
If we would have taken the view from the sidewalk, you don't see the fourth floor, or even the middle of the street. That's why we pulled back pretty far to try to start to capture some of that fourth floor.
It'd be nice to have that view in the future, though, to actually see what you would see from the other side, as well as the type of view that we see here. Okay? So that we could actually say, okay, when you look at it from the sidewalk, you're not even going to see the fourth floor. But if you were to raise up a little bit, this is what you would see from, say, the second floor.
Yeah. And before you go to this, because I'd like to comment on this one, too. But a good way to tell how high we actually were in the rendering we have on the front sheet, you can see relative to the tops of the car, we're even higher than the top of the car. So we're a pretty high vantage point before you start seeing the fourth floor. So, we're at a pretty high vantage point before you start seeing the fourth floor.
And I sort of see that now that you've pointed out, but that's not obvious until it's pointed out.
So, we will be the first on our block, but one block south on the corner that you're looking at now, that you just went by, is
That was 1,001 Laurel, right?
1,001.
Okay, so, I mean, there is like a step up going up, starting, starting to see the lines.
Yeah, so farther north, you start getting taller buildings, or to the south at, right at the corner of Britton.
Can you back it up just a little? Thank you.
Doesn't have a reverse.
Google does not want us to drive that way. Yes, please, just a little bit. Right about there. Hold on. Okay, so that's 1,001 Laurel in the corner. And Lisa, Jill, how tall would you say that their four-story is right there? Is that 50 feet?
It's probably 50 feet to the bottom of the roof line.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be probably about 50 if I had to guess, just by looking at it. They have a, you know, they have a pretty tall first floor or ground floor. And then I guess if you assume 10 feet per floor, maybe, or maybe a little bit more.
Yeah, about, but having done a few of these in San Carlos, you can't do it less than 50 feet for one of these types of buildings. With the ground floor requirements of the 16 and the 12, and usually, you don't want to have an eight-foot ceiling in a residential unit. And then the requirements for the stairs, the elevator, the roof, you know, your roof deck is right at 50 feet. And then you'll get some of the roof elements and stair and tower elements going above.
So, would you say that this line, that money there, would be the 16?
Above the top of the animal clinic, or the top?
Do you want to, oops, I'm sorry, sorry. Do you want to come here and use the mouse to point? You're welcome. You just have to put your finger on this.
So, are you saying that essentially, all of these buildings, when they're going to be redeveloped, they're all going to turn into 50-foot buildings?
For a four-story. You can't do it less, yeah.
Can you do three stories?
I knew that wouldn't be right.
Economically?
No, we just went through that exercise on 660 Laurel.
So, there's really, what's going to end up happening here on this street is everything is going to go to 50 feet?
Eventually.
It's either going to be, it's going to stay the same, or it's going to go to 50 feet.
It's permitted through the code.
Right, I'm trying to get at the point of, is there, if the idea is to have varying levels of buildings in the downtown, but from an economic standpoint, you can't really do anything less than four feet, 50 feet, then that's a problem to me. And so, I don't know how to address it, but it's something that I think needs to be talked about at some point.
If I can comment?
Yeah.
I'm an architect doing work in San Carlos, done a fair amount of projects in the city. And I'm not a planner or a land use developer. I'm not a developer, but I sit at a lot of these conversations with private clients, developer clients. Once you have a block like this, where there is tall development, and it's allowed in the zoning, there's 50 feet, and it's, you know, I've done different areas with different zoning, it's not all 50 feet, as you're aware, and it's been intensified in some areas to have that density localized, not spread out. But on a block like this, for example, you've got a four-story on the corner, you go farther north, you know, this particular end of the block is still one, but farther north you go, you start getting taller buildings. So, it's already, the pattern is there, the zoning allows it. For these little buildings to be redeveloped highest and best use, anyone interested in doing that to these buildings, other than leaving them the way they are in perpetuity, is going to have to develop to highest and best use. And they know this is where in the city they can do it, as opposed to getting closer to, you know, the single-family, which, you know, that's why these, in my observation, like I said, I'm just the architect, but, you know, it makes sense to me. And you get the higher density in these areas on Laurel Street, where you get the activity, the street activity, and, you know.
Yeah, I'm not, it's a conversation that we need to have, because I think the idea was that we would have different-sized buildings and not necessarily sort of a one-dimensional four-story buildings all along the street. And so, I understand you can always build to less, but most developers will not consider that.
Yeah, because who's going to build to the smallest building?
Right, you want to build to the shape of the box.
And, you know, and I really like the urban dense living. I live in San Francisco in Noe Valley, which is, you know, it's listed as one of the most desirable neighborhoods. And the studies show that when you have these buildings that create these consistently high walls on these great residential, I mean, sorry, great main streets, streets like Laurel Street, it creates an outdoor room. And you have these kind of consistent-sized walls that kind of create this nice main street environment. And you get a lot of variety, and it kind of takes away from that enclosure of a nice streetscape.
And I will only add, and just to note for the commission, that on the right-hand side of the street, if you're looking at this image on Google Earth, it's a completely different zoning district, although it does allow you to go up to 50 feet. Because of the transitional standards that are in place, because there's the resident, single-family residences on the other side, buildings would need to be lowered anywhere from 40 to 30 feet. And I believe the project at 934 Laurel, that's just up the block, is an example of that, that didn't go to 50 feet.
So, the other side of the street there is lower, has to be lower, because it's transitional into the single-family homes on the street over.
That's correct, it has different standards for height.
Just a pure design review question here. Why did staff and the architect go away from the brick, which to me seems to blend more with the brick building immediately next to it? And I just like it better, so why did we change that?
We felt it was heavy. Do we provide a copy of the architectural peer review letter in the packet? No, maybe if you have one, I don't, maybe we can borrow some of the terms used. And we had, we met with the gentleman that performed architectural peer review, but staff found it to be heavy and a little bit dated in terms of visual appearance, although we think it's important to provide some sort of architectural element so that buildings can read in a horizontal fashion, but rather than be exactly the same, we thought there was an opportunity to incorporate a different material. And we actually drew inspiration from a project that was completed, if you happen to remember.
On Irving.
Irving and Ninth Street?
Irving and Ninth.
And I could, why don't, I could even bring that up, just because it shows you just the look and feel of the materials. Whoops. So, let me do that.
While you're doing that, I'd say I like that it's more horizontal, I'm just thinking that this would look neat being brick, but I could be wrong, because clearly, what do I know? But particularly because the building right next to it is brick, I think that's, I'm just trying to, in my mind, find some way to work with making them go with the buildings nearest them.
While she's doing that, could you comment to Commissioner Marsh's comment about the side not having any windows? Is it possible to put any windows in there, or, I mean, is there any way to break up that facade?
On a small lot, it's very difficult. When we have a big parcel like Pacific Hacienda, you know, we can afford on a parcel that big to start bringing it in on all edges, but these little infill sites, we can't get double-loaded units. So, this is all single-loaded off of, you know, a corridor, meaning everybody's got their unit to one side. So, when we're up against the property line on the north, it's so we can take advantage of as much windows and articulation on the south side, since we're the first one, and I don't want to say the first ones on the block, because you go farther north and south, there's the other examples, but being the first immediately adjacent to us, you know, we get to pick the side where we're going to go zero. But the other lots are all the same size, and it's going to be near impossible for them to not be zero on one side. And we hope that the one next to us, they'll go zero, you know, no guarantee. But when you try to split it on both sides, which we just did at 777 Walnut, we split the baby in half, right?
Yes, we did.
Then you get little narrow sides, which, you know, in there, I think it was very appropriate. But here, to try to split that again on such a small lot, 777 was wider, we had three lots there.
But the way I, the way I look at this, in every single, on every floor, at least on the second and third floor, there's stairways and there's hallways on that side there. And to completely enclose those and not have any windows there at all, just seems to me a missed opportunity to let light into the project, okay, into these hallways, and to actually give some, some, at least temporary, a better look from the outside, because realistically, you don't know if the next property is going to design it so that, you know, they may design it exactly like you, where they actually have the open side to the south. And if they do that, then they're going to be staring at blank walls with no windows or anything like that. So, and again, we don't know how long that's going to take. And in the meantime, I mean, I've seen in South San Francisco, they paint murals on the side of the building, or something like that, just something so that it doesn't look like it's a blank
Blank wall.
Section. It doesn't look like blocks.
I
Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand exactly what you're saying. To get a window in the corridor or the stair, because of distance of openings to property line on the building code, you can't get any closer than three feet, I think now, Joni, three feet. It used to be five, but I think now we can do three, if it's a very small percentage of the whole opening. But anyway, three feet away. So, it's a tough choice. I mean, we can start pulling back the stairs or the corridor, and if you look in the floor plan, you see that the corridor length is maybe only a third the length of that north elevation, because starting from the back, we've got a kitchen, then the stair tower, then the section of corridor, the elevator, and the stairs, so.
So, can you explain that to me again, why you couldn't put windows? Maybe staff can help a little bit on this. I don't see why they can't put windows in sort of
It's a building code requirement, right.
You can't have windows in a stairway?
No, I mean, not on the property, not on the property line, I think that's what we're saying.
Correct, you have to be three feet away from a property line
Three feet away from a property line in order to, but
So, to your point, to do that, we can provide some light into the corridor, for example, but we'd have to push a section of it back by three feet. So, you know, our choice is, well, wouldn't we rather have the more
That's not my intent. My intent is to try and find something to sort of make the side of that building look more appealing.
Murals.
Under the code, every increment of 25 feet needs to be broken up. And maybe, Bob, if you can kind of walk them through that elevation, because there's some vertical elements there that I believe project outwards from the main face of that wall.
Right, and, I mean, it's hard to see in a flat elevation. And also, where you're going to get the impact of that is going to be more from the alley, because in your sightline, the buildings are set back from the alley. But actually, Lisa or Jill, if you can go back to the street view, because when you're actually going down Laurel Street, because of the height
Before we leave this?
Yes.
Sorry, since it took you time to get here.
Right, so, just to explain, this is a new building in the city of San Francisco. I believe it's on Irving Street, maybe just north of Ninth, or Irving and Ninth, whoops, I'm sorry, this is very touchy, let me turn around the other way. And this was used as an example of how you could accomplish this high storefront in kind of using, you know, a concrete base with the recessed retail areas. You can see here in this example, they have, Bob, remind me the name of this material here that we're using.
Cement fiber board.
Cement fiber board, kind of simulated to look like wood.
As I say, it looks woody.
Right, which is what they have here on the top.
I love that wood.
So, they kind of drew from this as a way, you know, to kind of have a more attractive retail frontage with some of the vines that'll eventually grow up, as you can see here in this image.
And I really like the way those vines are going to break up that building. And if there were some way to do some more of that somewhere that makes it look greener, that sort of
And if you look at our rendering, we've taken that same treatment. This was, we had a lot of discussions about this building, and putting it as vertical greenery instead of on the ground and bringing that width of the sidewalk right up to the storefront. It's not shown as, you know, fully grown, because then you, it'd be hard to see what the building looks like, but you can see that we do have vines training up the
Yeah, you got in the columns there, yeah.
Now, ours are not as wide as the ones you just saw on Irving, because we're a much smaller building, you know, they're probably about three times as wide as we are, so they had wider columns. But we are using that trained vines up the pilasters at the storefront.
So, is this, you mentioned that the, it was cement siding that looked like wood? Is this supposed to be this similar?
Yes, yeah, and it's smooth, it doesn't have wood grain, it's a smooth cement fiber board plank.
I really like the other one.
I like the one in San Francisco. That looked really good.
Yeah, that is, that is the material. The one, yeah, the one on Irving Street is that material.
Maybe it's just the color that's getting
Okay, that makes me feel better.
Thank you, that does make me feel better.
Yeah, so that's not like a solid orange
Thing.
Thing, yes.
And it does have a little bit of spacing, right, so it's not a solid
Okay, because the drawing shows it.
And it, you know, at that, at that scale, you know, trying to render that is difficult, but
So, there was, we were going to look at the side and possibly look at the, how the facade's broken up.
Yeah, and Lisa, are you driving? If you could go up Laurel a little bit and then turn back, but go past If you could go up Laurel a little bit and then turn back, but go past the, that red tile roof, a little bit more. Okay, now turn around and look back. And keep turning back. From the, from the plane of view, when you're looking at that side, and you can kind of get a sense of the height from, you know, the fourth story down the block, but a lot of that north side is going to be hidden from your vantage point as you're driving down Laurel, because even now, it's just the roughly 16-foot-high mansard. And again, we're at the camera level of the Google camera on top, you know, you're actually going to be much lower than this. So you'll probably see the third story and some, and the fourth story of the side of the north. But where you'll see more of it is going to be from the alley, because the buildings are set back. So if you go back to that north, north elevation on sheet A4, you'll see the back side has stepped back quite a bit, whereas the front, and that's because of the zero setback in the ordinance for the first three floors, and then 10 feet in the, on the fourth floor, we've got more building mass towards the front. But even with the now, you know, the adjacent building at roughly two stories high at the top of their mansard, in the sightline from Laurel, that whole kind of middle section of the north elevation really won't be seen from the street.
So you're saying essentially we'll really only be seeing
Right, the fourth floor and, you know, towards the front and the fourth floor, but the middle section of the third, third and part of the second story, which is covered up by the adjacent building anyway, is going to be hard to be seen from the street, or won't be seen from the street. You'll see more of that from the alley. But the backside has stepped back considerably more than the front.
Well, just a comment here. I did sort of begin my part by saying it felt massive, massive, but I could be convinced. I do think a, knowing that that orange section would look more like a wood section in San Francisco helps break it up to me. And seeing the vines and seeing how they'll articulate higher does, does help, as does all the Google viewing we've done to, to see the sizing of it. So I just wanted to thank you guys for bearing with me through all that. I am feeling better.
I'm feeling a little better, too. I was, I was in shock for a while. I was in shock for a while.
It just looks very big two-dimensionally.
For you to let us poke holes in it for extended length of time.
So, the one thing, or one of the things that I'm still struggling with is all that paving in the front, okay? And if you look at, I mean, if you look at this view right here, of all of these buildings here, every single one of them has plants out there. They're trying to create the planter boxes that were never put in in the first place. And at minimum, I would like to see that area way to the left, that's off to the side there, some sort of planter box, maybe a little waterfall, maybe, you know, just something that, and obviously not during the drought, but just something that will draw a little bit more landscaping in the front, a little bit of, you know, something that everybody here is trying to do anyway. And, and it just gives a space for that to occur.
And
And it was, you had that in your original one, and I liked what I saw when I saw the original one. Really, that sort of area off to the left in the front.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's still a walkway to get to the residential area, but that whole area off to the left.
I, I don't see any issues with that. The owner, unfortunately, is not here tonight, but I don't think he would have any objection to that. We had that in our earlier scheme. And I think from the, from the discussions we had with the peer reviewer and staff, the concern was more about the interface with the, with the commercial storefront, you know, not to put that obstacle between the sidewalk and the commercial storefront. So this is the residential entrance, it, it doesn't compromise that, so I think that's something that we could accommodate easily.
And if it were up to me, I would probably do little areas on either side of the columns on the inside, but I'm, I'm not sure that, that's something that other people would go for.
And if I could just make one quick comment on that. If the retailer who goes in decides to put his door on the very end of his storefront, then
Right.
It would get in the way of that.
Okay. So, the, the, okay. And they would still be able to put planters outside like everybody else does, all in along the
You could do pots, which aren't so
That's what I meant by planters.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because when we looked at that before, that's what everybody else is doing. In fact, they're using them as sort of dividers for restaurants and, and things like that.
There was one other issue that I don't think we actually got a final answer on, which was the solar panels of the ones that you brought up, Scott, and I don't know if you want to talk about that more, or
Sure, I can speak to that. We're just at the beginning of the energy compliance. It is CalGreen. The regulations just got more stringent, and they'll, they'll continue to do that. We don't know what we're going to need to comply with all of it, but solar is one of the options. And we found on some of our other recent projects that solar hot water gets you more than photovoltaic. So, you know, it's, it's definitely in the mix, and it would probably be hot water. But we haven't gone through all of the calculations yet.
But just to make it CalGreen compliant?
Right, right. Yeah, it will be CalGreen compliant, and I think it's CalGreen Basic, CalGreen Basic, yeah.
And what are the, how does that relate to what I've heard before, like lead silver or lead gold or things like that? Are they even, are they comparable? Are they
They're comparable. We, on some projects, we had to do both, because lead was a condition of approval or, or a planning department requirement, but state still requires us to do CalGreen. So in that instance, we do both. We have to, to supply the ordinance of the city and state. CalGreen Basic is close to lead basic. Then you get into silver, which is kind of close to Tier One. And they, they've just changed recently, so that's why I'm not really sure, and it's hard to keep up with them all, and
I mean, the building code, our, obviously Building Official isn't here, but our building code, these changes that are occurring to the building code are becoming more and more, I guess, moving in the direction of what we used to call as lead. So in some cases, they may, there'd be some overlap. So our building code seems to be catching up with some of the lead standards.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions for applicant, architect?
No, I'm okay.
No? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, all right, closed public. Any discussion?
We need to vote close.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much. It's my first time.
That's okay.
Yeah, okay. May I have a motion to just close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all aye. None, none opposed, motion passes? All right, so now, any discussion?
Well, I feel a lot better.
Yeah.
Seeing it, and, and, you know, looking at it two-dimensionally is different than looking at it and understanding, for the first time, actually, on this one here, I can see sort of the, the wood pieces across here, whereas on the two-dimensional one, it just looks like this big solid
Looks like they just painted it orange.
This big, solid, concrete, orange side.
Right.
And so, I feel better about that. I still would like to add in the landscaping. I mean, from, from my perspective, you can't have enough landscaping in, in a, on a, a place where there really is no way to put any real landscaping here. So anything that you can do, even the little things, make a huge difference.
Do you want to make that a condition on the residential entry?
I'd
The addition of the left planter box as a
I'd like to make it a suggestion that they look into doing that. I don't know if I want to make it a condition, but I would like to see them take that into consideration. And, yeah, let's make it a condition.
I was thinking the same thing. Let's just, let's condition it.
All right, well If there's not any more discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission grant design review conditional use permit and below-market rate housing plan approval for a new eight-unit mixed-use development located at 977 Laurel Street, APN 051-358-270, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and as conditioned in the conditional use permit and code compliance certificate, with the additional
Landscaping to be provided on the front left-hand side.
With the additional landscaping to be provided
In front of the residential access.
On the front left side
Of the residential access.
Of the residential access.
Boom.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the Palo Alto Medical Foundation design review approval to amend the approved sign program to allow a third building-mounted sign for property located at 301 Industrial Road, APN 046-051-020 and 070. You have a presentation?
Yes, and good evening. As you know, Lisa Porras, Principal Planner at the City of San Carlos. I will be making this presentation to you tonight. Item 6B on the agenda is a request from the Palo Alto Medical Foundation for design review approval to install a third building-mounted wall sign on the medical building currently located at 301 Industrial Road. A sign program for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation San Carlos Center was a required condition of approval based upon architectural review of the initial project. In 2012, the Planning Commission approved a sign program that included five primary signs. Of the five signs, two of the signs were building-mounted wall signs. One of those is oriented towards Highway 101, and the other one is oriented towards Industrial Road to clearly identify the building as seen from the street. Apart from these two wall signs, the sign program also included one monument sign at the site's main driveway, and two directional signs posted at the northern and southern driveway, driveway areas. And so since the Palo Alto Medical Foundation San Carlos Center opened in November of last year, they have identified the need for additional signage, one or third new wall, wall sign, building-mounted on the north-facing elevation, to identify vehicles as they proceed southbound along Highway 101. This graphic here depicts the location of the existing building-mounted wall signs, and those are represented by the thick black lines that you see here on this image. Those are the two that were originally approved and that are now located on the building. And this image also shows in the red dark line the location of the requested third building-mounted wall sign. This newer third building-mounted wall sign would have the same size and appearance of the two existing building, building-mounted wall signs. This elevation here shows how the proposed sign would appear on the north-facing elevation. The black and white diagram to the upper right shows the location of the wall sign based on the current configuration of the medical buildings and the parking garage, the parking garage being the one in a light outline. The Sutter Health logo, as you can see on the left-hand side of the sign, would be a total of 49 square feet, the same as the existing signs, while the overall lettering for Sutter Health Palo Alto Medical Foundation would be 184 square feet. The total area for this new sign would be 233 square feet, which is the same as existing signs that are on the building. The applicant also prepared several renderings. This one here shows how the sign would appear as seen from the rear or north side of the site. And then this rendering here that was prepared by the applicant shows the proposed sign as it would be seen traveling south on Highway 101 as you approach the Holly Street, Britton Avenue exit. As noted at the bottom of the first page in the staff report, the two initial building-mounted wall signs actually increased in size when the applicant came in to pull the building permit for these signs. And the reason for that is for their business purposes, is they wanted to accommodate Sutter Health and add in, instead of just Palo Alto Medical Foundation, the text Sutter Health. And this basically amounted to an increase from 147 square feet that was initially approved to 233, 233 square feet for each of the two wall signs that were part of that original sign program. This modification was approved at the staff level because the signs were in the exact same location as originally depicted in the sign program, and the lettering size was the same. The only difference was that the overall sign length was increased to accommodate the text Sutter Health. So the current request is to add a third wall sign, where in the sign program, only two were approved. With a third wall-mounted sign, the overall increase would be 33% area of sign increase from the current constructed square footage of sign, signs that are on the property. For a reference point, the sign ordinance typically allows 1.6 square feet of sign area for every lineal foot of primary site frontage. So, so if we look at the lineal site frontage for the PAM building, we find that it's 1,160 square feet. If we were multiply that by, multiply that by 1.6, we would get a total sign area of 1,856. Based upon the current request, the total area would be less than half of that at 934, approximately 934.3 square feet, which would be less than half of what they would otherwise allow, based upon, you know, the proportion of the lineal feet of the, of the frontage. So staff is recommending an increase from two to three building, two to three, from two to three building-mounted wall signs based upon the scale of the site and the regional nature of the use. As a reminder, the overall site is just over 18 acres with over 1,100 lineal feet of business frontage. The proposed sign is also, we, staff finds the proposed sign would be proportionate to the overall facade and would assist drivers in locating the facility off of Highway 101. In order to approve the sign program, the commission would need to make four findings. Number one is that the project is consistent with a general plan and sign ordinance. In your staff report and packet, we note some general plan goals and policies relative to signs and the design of it. We need to find that the sign would be appropriate to the city, the neighborhood, and the lot, that the design is compatible with the overall environment with respect to the use, materials, colors, the setbacks, meaning how far the sign is from relative property lines, the overall location and height and design, and that it would comply with the sign ordinance. As mentioned before, the sign ordinance provides the opportunity for for buildings such as this one to utilize a sign program to allow some flexibility with the otherwise required standards in the code. Should the commission choose to make it, and I do apologize for this...
Good thing I made the first one, Scott.
That you would make, and there is water on the table for every, anyone who chooses to make the motion. I wanted to highlight a couple of the modifications. This motion, again, is amending a pre-approved sign program. So, we're kind of spelling out the whole, all of the components of the sign program because there's additional wayfinding signage that was included as well. But identified in red notes the specific changes that would be made. So, as you can see, there are six signs identified. Instead of one internally illuminated, there would be two. One would be located on the north side in the overall square footage. Staff is requesting that the applicant, should this be approved, amend the overall sign program so we could have one document within the city that reflects all of these changes. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Yeah, just one. Have there been any problems, I guess, with the other illuminated sign? Any complaints from nearby residents?
None that staff has received. In fact, of the two building mounted wall signs that were approved, only the one that faces Highway 101 could be illuminated, and the one that's facing onto Industrial Road can not be illuminated.
Great, thank you.
Do you have examples of other buildings that have more than five signs in San Carlos?
Typically, the projects that have a sign program are larger, more industrial complexes. For example, there's two that I can think of. They're located just on the west side of Industrial Road around the Britton Avenue area. Those projects have sign programs, but I don't recall. I mean, I'd have to look it up to see how many signs were approved. But one of the options in doing a sign program is that, you know, all sign programs are required to be approved by the commission, and it does provide flexibility for projects that, you know, maybe are larger in size or part of a larger overall site rather than abiding by the typical one business, one sign provisions in the sign ordinance. But I don't have a specific, I guess, I don't have, I don't know off the top of my head of one where it has additional, or I guess, over, above and over what you might get from the regular code. But I would imagine that any project that has a sign program is more likely than not to exceed some of the basic requirements of the code.
And the other question I had is, what's, what happens after the hospital's built? Because if I remember when this came through the first time, the idea was that the sign was placed in such a way that when the hospital was built, that's much closer to the freeway, and the sign that's on... Sort of, let me see which direction it is.
Is it, are you referring to the sign that's facing the freeway?
Yeah, the existing location 23 wall sign.
Yes. So, in the code compliance certificate that's provided in your packet as attachment one, and I actually went ahead and provided the original code compliance certificate, which is attachment two. If you look at condition number five, it's condition number five on attachment one, which is the current code compliance certificate that would note the amended, the amended sign program. It does address that sign number 23. I guess all of these signs had specific numbers initially assigned to them facing Highway 101. Basically, the idea is that it could be removed in the future and reinstalled at a specific location on the hospital building when that's constructed. But that doesn't increase the overall sign. Again, the sign program, if the commission were to approve it, would allow maximum of three. So, this condition, I suspect, was written to allow them to put some signage on the building today, as it now is, and allow them to relocate that once the hospital portion was built.
The idea at the time was that they would put a wall sign at location 23, and then the tower, when it's built, is actually back much closer to the freeway and faces the freeway in such a way that they wouldn't need a second sign. And I'm wondering if this second sign is just because they... There's been a delay in the building of the hospital and the tower itself. And is this something that they really need? Or is it something that they're just, you know...
Yeah, I think I understand your question. You know, based upon the ultimate build-out, would it be something that they really need? Unfortunately, I don't have that information here, and the applicant is not here tonight. We were told that the main reason for requesting a third wall sign was to provide additional visibility for drivers as they're driving southbound. And from what I recall, even though there is a phase two, it could be that it could be, you know, many years and I, before that is actually constructed. I don't, unfortunately, I don't have any additional information from the applicant as far as the timing of that or when that might occur. But again, overall, the request is for a maximum of three. And this condition here, that is a carryover from the previous code compliance certificate, would allow them some flexibility to relocate that.
Yeah, I was driving this, this past weekend. I go, what's happening? Oh, yes, that's the, and I go, gosh, I actually thought to myself they probably could use the sign there.
Yeah, I think that's...
From, I mean, from, just from 101. If you're driving in from, I mean, being in San Carlos, we know it, but none for coming from another city. And the applicant's not here. Anyone from the public want to make a statement?
Actually say San Carlos because you're basically just looking at Palo Alto Medical Foundation. And if you're not from the area, how would you know that you're actually in San Carlos? Or that, you know, someone says, "Go to the, go to the hospital in San Carlos." Well, how are you going to know where it is? So, just, just more like a comment. And I don't know if that, if there's in the phase two element, if there's a way to, you know, develop the signage program to include that. I mean, I can see it graphically where you would just put San Carlos in a nice italic, you know, to the right underneath that strip of text. Anyway, just a comment.
Thank you.
Excellent comment. Excellent comment.
Very good comment.
I think that's, that's perfect. And that, I would like to suggest that we ask staff to take this back and see if there's some way that we could add San Carlos to the existing sign and the future sign. And I would be much happier with approving this if it said something like, you know, it had Palo Alto Medical Foundation, Sutter Health, and then underneath it said San Carlos Center or something like that. I don't know what they call this particular hospital, but if they have some name that includes San Carlos, that would be, that would be a great thing for the city and to see it from the freeway.
That's a really interesting point. Yeah, I mean, they must call it something internally.
Exactly. Let's, let's, yeah. I think it's the San Carlos Center or the San Carlos Building or, yeah, something.
I think to do that, we'd probably need a motion, right, to send it back?
Or table, would we table it, or how would we do this, Lisa?
If the, hmm, there's a couple of options. I guess if the, it sounds like the commission, this is something that you agree to or at least feel strongly enough.
I'd at least want to know more.
Right here, it says, "Within the PAMF San Carlos Center."
Right, right. So, in order to add that additional text, it would be increasing the square footage. Since they do, we already required them to come back with a comprehensive update to the sign program. We could, I mean, if the commission desires, you can put in, if you wanted to approve this tonight, to keep them on their schedule because I think they would like to be able to add this wall sign in the near future, which is why we work with them to get them on the agenda this evening. The commission could look at some language that basically, you know, would require them to, you know, if they're, if you're going to approve an amendment, you want to do it on the condition that they maybe add. I don't know what you have in mind, whether it's a logo, actual text, where that text would be placed. Because we have the wall signs, then there's a monument sign, and then there's a lot of directional signs. I don't maybe think you mean the directional sign.
I would just like to see it on the two freeway signs.
And maybe that's the condition that the commission...
So, we would add that condition to approving this motion?
Is there any direction on the signage? Yes, but maybe you could provide some direction as far as, I mean, you would want it to be in proportion and scale with, or maybe to match the colors of, I'm just throwing that out there.
Right.
Can we leave that up, can we leave that up to staff? To work with them to come up with something?
If you're happy with staff to work with the applicant to do that, then we could approve that at the staff level.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, do we, anyone else from the public want to speak? No? All right, I'd entertain a motion to close public.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes. Okay, all right. Any further discussion, or we? All right, then I'd entertain a motion.
You're going to let me do this one?
I think so, Scott, yeah. I ran out of breath doing the last one, so...
I move that the Planning Commission approve the request of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation for design review approval of an amendment to the approved sign program for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation totaling 28 signs, six of which would be business identification signs of a fixed size, design, and location, including two internally illuminated building mounting signs on the north and east wall of the medical office building, which will contain the following additional words, "San Carlos Center." A building mounted sign oriented towards Industrial Road, not illuminated, an illuminated double-side monument sign at the main site driveway along Industrial Road, two non-illuminated monument signs located at the two secondary site driveways along Industrial Road, totaling 934 square feet to be amended to whatever it would include for the addition of the San Carlos Center for these six business identification signs, and various directional and wayfinding signs within the PAMF San Carlos Center for 301 Industrial Road, San Carlos, based on the findings and for the reasons set out in the staff report, and subject to the conditions as set out in the code compliance certificate. And do I need to add something about working with staff on those two signs?
I can add that to what you've already stated.
Please.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, a motion passes. Okay. All right. Then next on the agenda are reports, correspondence, and general information. Are there any reports on recent city council actions?
No reports on recent city council actions.
Okay. Planning Commission comments or reports?
I have one, and it's sort of along the road. So, when I went over to look at PAMF, one of the things that I noticed is that all of the trees on the west side of Industrial Road, the vast majority of them are dead. And I would like to know what's going on with those trees and what happened, and are they going to be replaced? And if they are going to be replaced, I would like to see them replaced with much taller trees.
Staff will note this for the record and communicate this to both the Public Works Director and the City Engineer.
Any correspondence?
None other than the email that was sent to the commission this afternoon from David McDonald.
Right, we did have that on our dais. Thank you. Okay, and planning staff, comments, reports, and updates on current projects?
Yes, I have a couple of reminders and some updates for the commission and for the public who may be watching at home. Just a friendly reminder that the city council adopted a water conservation ordinance earlier this year, which does take effect May 15th. So, that date is coming up. If anyone has any neighbors or interested in learning more about what the ordinance addresses, you can go to the city's main page and under the headline news, look for the link regarding the declaration of the drought, drought emergency, and that will take you right to the ordinance where you can see all the requirements in order to conserve water. Again, this will go into place on May 15th. As most of the commission knows, and for the benefit of the public, the proposed development at Wheeler Plaza is scheduled to go before the Planning Commission on April 14th. That is a special hearing. The Planning Commission, the regular Planning Commission meeting of April 20th is canceled. The following meeting, regular meeting, that would be scheduled for the Planning Commission is May 4th. And on that date, staff plans to bring back to the Planning Commission a recommendation for adoption of the updated housing element. The city did receive a preliminary letter of certification from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So, that is good news for our city. So, the next step is to adopt it and then send it back to the state for formal certification. Also, on May 4th, as I think was noted earlier in a public comment that we received, staff is working with the project applicants at 545 Walnut, and their goal is to appear on the May 4th Planning Commission agenda. The project hasn't been deemed complete, so it's only a tentative date at this point, but it's getting very close, and so I thought I'd mention it. And then, lastly, the recommended zoning ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission made a recommendation on regarding the front setbacks in some of the mixed-use districts will be going before the council on April 13th. And that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
If no one has anything else, the meeting's adjourned.